Welcome to Boil the Frog Slowly, a radio program that answers the question, "Are politics hazardous to your health?" We go where mainstream media stops. Co-hosted by Sebastian Sanzoda, a marathon runner, a vegetarian, a former healthcare professional with five years of military experience in the US Navy, including two tours in the Persian Gulf, primarily working with advanced airborne early warning radar aircraft. Sebastian is experiencing firsthand the ill effects of EMFs. He is passionate to share his medical background, experience, and research in an effort to educate and save others from boiling in this hot health war soup. And co-hosted by me, Pat Rulo, author of Speak Up and Stay Alive: The Patient Advocate Hospital Survival Guide, and host producer of the nationally syndicated radio show, Speak Up and Stay Alive: Patient Safety Radio, heard on 220 radio and cable television stations throughout the country. The books and archive shows are available at speakupandstayalive.com. I too have been slowly and unknowingly boiled by hidden EMF hazards and have jumped out of the pot to tell all. You can listen to all previous and current Boil the Frog programs at boilthefrogradio.com, at iHeartRadio, and on our very own internet radio station, speakuptalkradio.com. I encourage you to share this program with as many people as you possibly can, week after week, as we gig out some of the leading issues we face today to help you understand, function, and ultimately survive in today's toxic environment proliferated by big money. Thank you for joining us as we jump out of the pot. All right, Sebastian, another wonderful afternoon with you.
Oh, as always.
Beautiful blue skies, lots of chemtrails going on.
Lots of chemtrails.
I got it. Today, we have our guest, Theodora Scarlato. She is from, a parent, I should say, from the Montgomery County Public School Systems in Maryland, and she is a concerned parent regarding the health hazards associated with wireless and Wi-Fi in schools, and has become a fierce advocate. And lots to talk about today. She's really, really been out there promoting this and working on it. So, welcome to the show, Theodora.
Yeah, welcome, Thea.
Thank you so much. Glad to be here.
Thank you. Well, to begin with, let's kind of step back and maybe take us on the journey. How and why did you feel that this was an issue that you needed to become so passionate and so vocal about?
Well, when I first learned about it, I was really skeptical. And, you know, I figured, well, I'll just hold the cellphone a little bit away from my head. I had a cellphone, we had Wi-Fi, and I loved, of course, Wi-Fi at the time. And what I started to do is just read, and the more I read and the more I dug, I was astounded at what I was reading. And I didn't even want to read any articles. I just went right to the science. And when I realized just how many studies there were showing, you know, damage to different endpoints in different parts of the body in experimental studies, I thought, whoa, what is going on here? And so, that was my journey. It took a few months of a lot of learning, and having children, I realized that there quite couldn't be anything more important than starting to work on this issue in my community.
What was your first line of action, and then what was the response?
Well, I went down a lot of roads. I started writing the state. I started writing the public school system. I tried posting things on local listservs. And I kept coming back with closed doors every time. But I kept thinking, okay, not this, then that. If not this, then that. I just started writing letters. I guess that's how I started, and talking to people.
Did you get any responses?
No, nobody really was interested. I would get no response. So, and then when I raised it again, you know, people would start to get upset. And I was actually really shocked about this because I thought, well, how is this, this is so important? You know, we're talking about our children's health and future health. So, one day, I actually ended up on the phone with the state of Maryland, and I said, look, I'm just not getting off the phone. I'm not getting off the phone till you get me someone who can answer my question. And that was a long day on the phone, passed around to different people. And what has become very clear to me is that there aren't people looking at this issue. And so, my job as a mom became, we need to get people looking at this issue and putting it out there and saying, the time is now to look at this issue. Because no one even knows anything about it. I mean, my kids pediatrician, doctors, no one. They didn't have any useful information.
Yeah, that's definitely a big, big problem, is that doctors are unaware. Boy, and you really have done some great work bringing awareness. I mean, just when I Googled your name, Theodora Scarlato, and safe schools, I mean, I got a whole page of stuff involving you, and it's gone back a couple of years at least. And I even saw you were prominently mentioned on Dever Davis' Environmental Health Trust website.
Ah, yes, yes. I work with them as well. I've tried to do whatever I can to, you know, to communicate this issue and get all the information I can. We started, the Safe Tech for Schools Maryland is really a group of parents from all over Maryland, but you can see that in Montgomery County, there's a strong core of growing awareness, because there's some other parents who we found each other online. Like, I just Googled when I saw a petition about safe technology in school, and found another parent, and then found another parent that way. And we're all in different schools, and, you know, just trying to speak to principals and talk to other parents, and have meetings, and get parents up to speed on what the issues are, and also what they can do. And then we've been met with a pretty interesting resistance.
It is interesting, yeah.
I just read your, I think it's 45 pages rebuttal letter back to the Montgomery County Board of Education. That was quite interesting. Tell us about that, how that came to be, and what the response was to that.
Oh, yeah, that was, that really was something. What happened was, when I first began talking to the public school system, there would be, you know, a typical response, which it turns out the other parents who I know had gotten the same exact response back as well. You know, he just cut and pasted the same, it's the same-as-a-son kind of stuff. And then, as we began to grow and got some more news coverage of what was going on, the school system then put up a website. And on that website, the Montgomery County Statement of Radio Frequency, I forget the exact name, there is almost every myth that we know about this issue, like FCC standards are not outdated is prominently there. They cite a lot of industry research. And if you look at my 45-page letter, which actually has grown, I need to resubmit my updated one, there are over 33 false statements. And perhaps the most prominent one that we all meet, at least here in the United States, is, well, the FDA and the EPA, they've reviewed this. They've looked at this issue, and they've decided that the standards are safe. And of course, that's not true. So, I contacted these agencies and got emails back confirming that there hasn't been any official review. It's not like there's someone sitting and they're having meetings, and they're looking at all the research and saying, you know, oh, these standards are safe. That's simply not the case.
Yeah, in fact, no one has said that they're safe. The telecom industry hasn't even stated that cellphone radiation is safe.
That's right. In fact, that commentary by Dr. Sammett clearly states, there are no assurances of safety.
Yep. Boy, and just nobody has any idea, isn't it amazing? You can go out on the street and talk to anyone with a cellphone, and they have no idea.
I know, and I didn't either.
Yeah.
I had no idea. So, I was shocked. I mean, I think it took me six, no, no, I would say it took me three months before I went, wait a minute, cellphones and Wi-Fi are both non-ionizing radiation? And I was like, whoa!
Yeah, and they're bathing, they're bathing our children in this all day long, five days a week. And the amazing thing that parents just don't know, and they really should know, is that they're doing rat studies right now, all over the world, to see what the effects are, even though it's already been done, but they're still continuing to do it.
That's right.
While they're bathing the children in the same thing that they're testing on rats to see if it might possibly be harmful, which we already know it is. So, and I noticed you, I think you mentioned that in one of your YouTube presentations to the school board, you know, the fact that they're testing this on rats right now. It's just incredible.
I did, and it's at the end of my 45-page letter, and I think I'm going to do a post about it to really be clear about what's going on, because the National Toxicology Program has largest mice and rat study, I think, in the world going on. And of course, that was started years and years ago. It's years and years behind schedule. I wonder when we'll even see the results.
We never will, because it'll never be proven safe. We already know that.
Yeah. But, you know, I started to dig into that, and I don't know, anyone who's listening can take the time to go into the letter and go to the slideshows that the National Toxicology Program actually presented in 2009 and 2013. And it's fascinating. It's just fascinating. One, there's a quote by the FDA saying, "We don't know if it's safe or not," very clearly in the year 2000, quote. There's also shows set up with the cages and the rats and how they, at first, they had to do studies just to figure out how they were even going to study the rats. You know, how would they do the exposures? How would they, how would they set them up where they would be living? And so many parents, and one of the reasons I, let me say this, I wrote the 45-page paper, was just to go one by one over all these things that parents assume that are just not true. Like, we assume it was tested for long-term safety. We assume that, and that's, and it never was. Why else would we be testing all these rats and mice?
Yep. So, you debunked all of those basic lies that were on that website, the Montgomery County School website. What was the response to that? And I would almost imagine there could be some legal action against them putting up blatant lies on a public school website?
You know, what is so incredible is that there has not been any change to that website. And as of today, there it sits. Well, wait, let me backtrack. There were actually four changes that were made, but not to all the 33 other pieces. So, the one thing they did change, and, you know, I write emails kind of regularly to the COO and to the Board of Education. The one thing they said was, they said that the RF Class 2B classification was based on four hours a day of cellphone use.
Yeah.
Every day. And I mean, I wrote emails and emails, and of course, they didn't respond at all. And finally, I got an email from Dr. Elizabeth Cardis, who I personally wrote, and I said, is this true? You know, got the response, sent it to them. But then, rather than put in there, this was based on what is about 30 minutes a day, it's actually.
Yeah, 30 minutes.
Seven. For over 10 years, they put in this whole other complicated thing that really, parents aren't really gonna, it's just too comp, the whole thing is so complicated that if you say a lot of words, you can, people can assume, oh, that means it's safe, when that's not what it means.
Right, right.
Yeah, and that study was done over 10 years on about, what, 13,000 people? And almost 40% of them got brain cancer, and that was only using an older-style phone for 30 minutes a day, and I think that was mostly 2G phones. And then a later study that came out from Sweden showed that the newer generation phones were more deadly than the older generation phones. So, I mean, even when you're looking at that old study where they determined the level 2B classification, that was damaging enough. I mean, 30 minutes a day on an older phone, and nearly 40% of people over 10 years were getting brain cancer. I mean, that shouldn't have been a 2B, that should have been a level 1, just from that.
Well, it's so, it's so concerning, you know, and I feel like, what people come back to me is, they say, well, the phones now emit much less radiation. And I have to go back to what you just raised, which is that as we're getting into these new frequencies.
Yep.
We're seeing that they could be even more biologically active. And of course, it's not the power density that is important to our body, it's the nature of the pulse, it's that punch.
Right.
And if you look at the radiation, they actually did a big, they used the same radiation measurement company that did the LA School District here in Montgomery County, and they've posted, you know, that, oh, this, they use the averages. They've averaged the radiation exposure, and they have these graphs, which they have presented, or at least have online, as presented to the Board of Education, which show, look, these schools, their radiation levels are way low here, and of course, the FCC standards are up here. And then quite, and then they put in the BioInitiative 2007, not the BioInitiative 212. So, we have almost a decade-old report, and they say, well, we're not going to use the 212 report as a benchmark. And then they're passing this out and sharing this information with the community and with the board. And I'm concerned that board members aren't actually reading the letters that I've sent. You know, they weren't all 45 pages to begin with, that was just kind of where we ended up, when that page went up. But getting everyone educated is like, we've just taken it on, we're just taking it piece by piece, busting the myths one by one, and I hope that, you know, I think there should be legal action, because I don't understand how a public agency.
Absolutely.
Can post incorrect facts and get away with it.
Now, are you flying solo here, or do you have any support from other parents or even teachers?
Yes. Oh, there's a bunch of parents. No, I'm not flying solo. There are a bunch of parents, and there are, you know, if you think of water dropping in a pond, it's like so many circles of different people in the school system, and of course, across the state. Now, the teachers, I get calls from teachers and emails, that they are not ready to be public.
Okay.
Because there's so much.
Good sign.
You know, when you first raise this, people laugh, or it's, they're fearful for their job.
Yeah, they're afraid for their job.
So, that's unfortunate.
That is unfortunate, but there's strength in numbers, and, you know, that's what we really need, our parents really, to get together on this, and even students. Yeah, if even the students could get together, that would be very powerful.
Really powerful to say, yeah, as a student, I don't want to be in this classroom, it's not safe for me.
I don't want to be a lab rat in school.
Maybe we go back to the Jenny Fry story, you know?
Absolutely, yeah. In fact, I was encouraged to see on your YouTube videos of this February 9th school board meeting at MCPS. You had a student there give a little three-minute presentation, and boy, she was just wonderful.
Yes, that was incredibly courageous and wonderful, and she was talking about how her and her family had been asking to use an ethernet wire in the classroom, and been met with, oh, emails saying it's against regulations.
Didn't they say something like, it's a trip hazard?
Oh, my God!
Yeah, that was one of the final, yeah, so it started out with, they said, well, you can't, you can't hardwire the Chromebook. And then the family wrote back, well, actually, you can, and here's how, and here's all we need. I actually have, you know, I have the, I have the equipment. And then it became, well, that's against regulations, it's unclear exactly what that means, I'm not sure. But then, the final thing was, well, it's a tripping hazard. And I think I said it in a meeting before, which is, you know, there are a lot of wires, there are wires, but, or lines, but having a pick line is what we should be concerned about, of course, delivering drugs into your body if you had cancer or were sick. I mean, I can't, my jaw drops when people tell me, well, that's a tripping hazard.
We've had computers in schools for over 30 years, and people are pretending like they don't remember anything about that, like, this is brand-new that we're putting computers in schools, and they only work unless they're wireless. I don't get it. Is it, are people's short-term memories that fried?
I don't understand, because I think that, you know, we can, we've always been able to creatively address problems, and we can install ethernet connections in classrooms. And if we have to rearrange where the chairs are and where the desks are, then that's what we do.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't need to be, we don't need to have cords running throughout the class, it's easy, you just move where the chairs go, you move where the tables go, and you make it work, because it's what's best for the kids.
Absolutely.
To me, it's non-negotiable.
Absolutely. You can install plug-in jacks at every desk station, just get creative, just make sure there's a jack somewhere near where students sit, and then they can each just plug in their computer when they're using it. And they can, I'm sure they can make mobile devices, they can carry from class to class, and then just plug it in when they get to the classroom.
Yeah, I mean, they're doing it in other, in other countries, and there are schools that are taking the wireless out and putting in wired, and they're solving those problems.
Yeah.
It's a fully solvable problem. What's not easily solvable is if people start to get sick.
Right.
You can't fix it with creative planning of where the wires run. And I, I think somehow it's challenging, and we have to just help people think about those terms, about what we're looking at if we don't take action now.
So, why the resistance? What, what does the school board or the powers that be have to gain one way or the other? I mean, why do they insist on the wireless? Will they be, will their Chromebooks be taken away if they hardwire them? And what is the, what is the reasoning behind it? I mean, they're supposed to be educators, people that research and study and great-thinking minds, you know, and looking out for children. What's really going on that they won't listen and behave properly here?
You know, I'm really challenged by that question, and I'm, there are a lot of different answers to that, in that for the, for the Chief of Technology Officer, you know, this is what, this is the plan that he's been working on, this 21st century learning initiative. So, and it corresponds, of course, to the park testing, which is a whole nother layer here, which is the testing in the schools actually, in order to do all this testing, there needs to be this infrastructure in place, and it seems like they think that it needs to be wireless, at least that's what has been stated. But I, but in understanding why the board isn't open to hearing this, I think it's just so shocking to, to their mindset at first, or, I don't really know, you know? And I think for everyone, when a lot, well, when a lot of people first hear this, they're like, what? No, that's crazy. Even, even if you present them with facts, even if you have everything lined up for them, it's more of a psychological reaction.
But if that's, but if that's their job, I mean, if they are entrusted to be stewards of these young people, I, my mind is blown. I don't understand why they wouldn't say, okay, this is new to me, it frightens me, I don't like it, but this is my job, I have a responsibility to pay attention to this, and then maybe go and do their own research? And are we really saying that there's a whole board of people that are just backing off and saying, la-la-la-la-la, you know, I don't want to know about this? It's mind-blowing to me.
I don't know. I'll tell you what I think is really important for parents to start to do, because what I have definitely learned is that the first reaction is, that's not true. It doesn't matter what you say, that's the reaction. Even if I hand them, you know, a doctor said this, it doesn't matter. I've even been told, that's not true. I said, well, actually, it is true, they don't, they can't see it. But what I've been, what I think's important is just, we need to get it all on public record, that we have presented them with the information, it's not our opinion, it's the opinion of scientists. We need to make a clear ask, which is for safe technology in schools. And then we need to document what ultimately happens, which is the total lack of transparency around the next series of events. So, you know, for example, I have gotten hardly any response from the school when I write a letter. I don't get a letter back saying, here's the answer to your questions. In fact, initially, we had questions, and I think it took nine months, it was six or nine months before we got an answer, and that's because we started to go to the council people. So, if we need to start to hold everyone accountable with just what you said, which is, we're entrusting our children into your care, and, and so, we ask that you do due diligence. And what's happening is there's not due diligence happening, there's something else going on, and it needs to be, it needs to be out in the open. So, whatever is going on, whatever conversations are happening about why you've decided that this is safe, even though there seems to be this information saying it's not safe, then please show me that proof of safety. And really, they can't even come up with it. So, that website that MCPS put up does not actually have proof of safety on it. It's so misleading, and there are actual misfacts on it. But then, that's why I wrote the 45-page paper, to say, to just call it out.
I wonder if you could put each and every one of these people on legal notice as we were suggesting to do with smart meters and utility companies?
That's a great idea, we need to, need to do that on legal notice.
To say that you will be accountable for any harm that happens, we put it out there to you, we've asked you to do due diligence, you have turned a blind eye to that, we are now putting you on legal notice, should my child get sick, you, we are coming after you.
Actually, I have seen an article on the internet written about that, and it concerned the Lloyds of London ruling about, all the school boards have been notified by Lloyds of London that they're not insuring for health damages from wireless radiation from the Wi-Fi. So, if, if the insurance companies are backing out and covering their rear ends from any litigation for, for health harm, is that going to put the school board members on the hook then? I mean, somebody's got to be culpable, that they were informed. So, I would think that they could be on the hook for, for health damages.
Yeah, about six months, I wrote a letter speaking to that, exactly, and I had, I did a public information request, which, by the way, I really recommend for any parents who are listening, trying to figure out what, what can they do, they've tried and they're not getting anywhere, is start to, start to request information through your, your right with a FOIA or a public information request. And found that there, that the school, at least Montgomery County, did not have any coverage for this at all. They're self-insured.
Wow.
So, you know, there, there's so many ways to go with that, and one that resonates with some people who aren't really interested in the radiation issue is, this is your taxpayer money, there are going to be lawsuits, they may, and, and how are we risking that? Is this a risk you're comfortable taking, because these insurance companies are not comfortable taking that risk? And we might want to ask ourselves, why?
What about cell towers on school property? Is that an issue as well?
Yes, actually, I am part of Safe Schools PG, and helped form with a number of other groups, the Maryland State Coalition to Halt Cell Towers at Schools, because when I moved to Prince George's County, we found out that there had been a lease signed a few years earlier in a 30-second vote, or 40-second vote, where there was no public comment, and nobody I knew even knew, that all 73 schools were now available as cell tower placement sites, up to four cell towers, monopoles on each school.
Wow.
And then the towers started going in, so that was a lot of effort there. In Montgomery County, it's school by school, so every school is individually having to deal with Verizon or a company coming in and wanting to put a tower up. And many schools have been successful in stopping towers. And those schools are, of course, the higher-income, lower-minority schools with lower farms rates. And we even have a map showing how, depending on, on that criteria, you have, you get a cell tower or not. So, there are cell towers on one side of town, and there are two counties to the north in Maryland. There's Montgomery County and Prince George's County. In Prince George's County, the community was unaware that a few years earlier, the school board had signed a leasing agreement with a cell tower, you know, management company to allow 70 available. to allow 70 available cell tower sites. No one knew about it. There was no process in place. Even if the school was zoned as residential, they were arguing that they could still put the towers up. That's up to four towers per school. Um, so I and other people helped form Safe Schools PG and then we went on to form the Maryland State Coalition against cell towers on schools because there are groups in Anarundel County, in Montgomery County, and we all joined together to raise awareness on this issue. And I think I've been quite successful certainly in letting people, getting the word out. Now, in Montgomery County, the situation is different in that the, the cell tower companies go school by school. So a school may get, you know, you may hear, oh, there's a community meeting, they want to put a tower up and then there's a supposed process that is being followed. But what's happened is that the schools which have, um, lower, um, you know, which have higher income, lower minorities have been successful in keeping the towers off their schools. And then the other communities where there are higher farms rates, meaning higher free lunch, um, students who get free lunch, have the towers on their schools. And so the, on one side of town, we have the schools with cell towers and on the other side of town, we don't.
Oh, boy.
Wow.
So it all boils down to, to revenue flow?
Yep.
They're not even getting much money for putting the towers up. It's, it's the, it's the, um, the communities are not a part of the decision-making process and communities are not really being listened to and it, you know, it's really interesting that like right now, there's a school that is considered, um, you know, that has a high farms rates and, and high minority population in Montgomery County and they had a community meeting where the majority of people, I mean, it was something like 50 votes out of 54, voted against the tower. The principal has expressed that she doesn't want the tower and yet there has been no word back that they're going to stop that tower. They're, they're saying, well, you know, we, we met with you, but you don't have to agree or not agree. Whereas when you go to the, the schools where there are more affluent community lives, there's some cell tower meetings they've had and then the next day they get word that, oh, we, we won't put a tower on your school. They've stopped the towers from going up on those schools.
So what this means is, uh, we don't just have a wifi in schools issue, we've got a, a dual issue here, a two-pronged attack. I mean, even if we had some success with rolling the wifi out of schools, then, then you have to start another battle, uh, to get the, the cell towers off the schools.
You know, it's like, it's like you're sitting in a car and you're in a car wash and there's holes in the car and you've got one foot on one window, one foot on the other, one hand here and you're just trying to, it's just all hands on deck. And that's why I think we have to take this on as one issue in terms of radio frequency exposure, excuse me, minimizing radio frequency exposure and, and hit all the points.
Absolutely.
As we go in. Um, I know, you know, in, in Prince George's County, railroading would be an understatement of what's happening with the schools here. There've been some community cell tower meetings where two people have been present. And then they've checked it off, they did the community meeting and they move forward. And that's, that's why I have invested so much time into this and I'm really trying to move this issue with whatever I can.
The, the key to their success is rapid rollout with minimal public awareness. It's obvious they're trying to just get this up as quick as they can without anybody knowing. Um, I, I, I took the time, I watched the entire 55-minute YouTube video of, uh, Shelley McDonald, the teacher being fired over, um, a wifi in, in, uh, North Kingston, Rhode Island. And, you know, at the end of the video, it kind of, it, it came together, uh, where these school board officials are coming from and why they make their decisions. And basically, they, they let the cat out of the bag. They, they said, uh, we're, we're kind of at the mercy of state law and federal law and we have to do what they say. And they say these are safe exposure standards, so we have to do what they say. And e- even with Ed Friedman's, uh, smart meter, uh, case that went to, uh, the court in Maine, um, when it all came down to it, after all the appeals, the judge said, well, the FCC is the law of the land and we have to follow the law and they say these are safe exposure standards and game over. Um, so I, I think, uh, if you look at it that way, just kind of simplify it to that, the main problem here is the government. And, uh, it looks like school board members with, and particularly looking at, uh, the wifi in school issue, they're, they're kind of just the puppets here, being kind of controlled by the government, wouldn't you say?
Maybe, but they're allowing, they are participating in something that's really unacceptable. And I, you know, I just think that this is like this whole pass-the-buck. I mean, that's why I ended up on the phone with the Department of, with the Maryland State Department. I was between the health and the environment back and forth that day. Everyone says it's not my, it's, oh, this, this isn't my job or this isn't my area. And then ultimately, they go to the FCC guidelines and it's a little trickier with cell towers because of the Telecommunications Act. But with wireless in schools, I don't know that that is covered by, doesn't have the same exclusion. So, so we can say, um, we need you to look at this and schools, like in, in our state, there's a COMA regulation that schools should be safe environments. This does not meet that criteria. So now I'm making you accountable on that. You, the school system, you haven't met that criteria. There is no safe, there's no proof of safety. Every day there's more questions and we don't put a questionable exposure into a school. I agree that everyone goes, says it's not my problem, well FCC standards are safe. I mean, I hear that all the time and you have to go, well, first of all, they're not even standards. Second, they're not safe and no one says they're safe. And I understand why you might think that. And certainly that's the next level is starting to get a federal change. But I'm, you know, I'm not sure how that's going to go or win that, how that's going to work. The FCC docket's been open since 2013 and I haven't seen any action and it, it could be, you know, it could be decades.
Yeah, and, and all they've done is roll things out quicker.
Yeah, so I, I think organizing locally is really important because we have to get parents and, and people and, you know, non-parents to understand this so that, and be organized together.
Yeah, and, and you know what? I think the school board members should be part of that team. Their local community too and it's their job to be concerned about the, the health for children and protect their health. So let, let's include them on this and, and call, call out to them to join us. Yeah, quit, quit coddling the government and the industry, start, start doing your jobs.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly. Well, think about what's happened in, um, in Massachusetts, in Ashland. You know about how they have, uh, the school board, the Ashland School Board has best practices with devices?
No, go ahead and tell us about that.
Oh, yeah, um, there's been a lot of advocacy there and the school board actually has best practices, which is turning the wifi off when not in use.
Good.
Um, keeping the devices on a table. And if you watch some of the videos, there was a, I think it was in Framingham, oh, I don't know the town, um, but there was a meeting with, uh, Dr. Sharma, Dr. Davis, Janet Newton was there and there's some videos of a Q and A after where a school board member meets. It talks about the story of what happened and the school board is, is actively involved. You can listen to school board members or a school board member talk about, you know, the process where they made that decision. They have best practices posted in every classroom and they teach the staff and any incoming staff, they teach the incoming staff. And according to what I saw from the school board member who spoke, they're moving forward with, you know, making more, more changes. And that's the first public school system to do that.
Obviously, it's going to depend on the school boards. Um, I, I brought up Shelley McDonald. Let, let's talk about Shelley McDonald. She's a friend of yours and she's gotten some press lately. Even the mainstream media, um, has been covering, uh, this issue, uh, in your neck of the woods in Maryland. Um, I know there was a Fox Five report was pretty good. I think there were a couple, a couple others. Um, yeah, can, can you talk to us about Shelley and, and her efforts?
Oh, so Shelley is a math teacher in North Kingston, Rhode Island, um, who I've had the wonderful pleasure of, of, of meeting and talking to for several years now. And she has for years been going to the school committee, it's actually called School Committee, and talking about wireless and the, the risk to children's health and talking about herself as well because it impacts her. She has, um, you know, it gives her headaches and when they, for example, there's one video, which is after they turned the access points on in the school and she talks about what happened for her. Um, and she's been doing this for years, talking to the school board. And now the school committee is, um, setting to terminate her and they had that first meeting, which I found, I was just in shock watching the video of what was going on in this, in this, uh, meeting where they put out the terms that they were firing her for insubordination. Um, there's going to be another hearing, an evidentiary hearing where they present the evidence. Um, but it seems to me that, uh, you know, they didn't, they didn't like what they were hearing and, you know, are using this term, insubordination, but I, I really didn't see any evidence of that. She apparently, and, and I might, I might not have this exactly correct, but with the park test, she was asked as a teacher to sign something which would, she was concerned would give away, uh, the privacy rights of the students. And so she didn't want to sign that piece of paper and that became an issue, which then got rectified when a lawyer came in and said, well, actually, this is doing that and it shouldn't be signed. And then none of the other teachers had to sign that paper. Um, and then they're also firing her because she, uh, quote, "turned the wifi router off", end quote.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And the school is not even, they don't have a one-on-one device program. These, these access points and router or their access points are on, you know, radiating all day and the, the students might not even be using devices.
Wow.
So she bravely has asked that the, the meetings be public, which is, you know, you never see that. You don't see teachers being fired, but she's had it be a public meeting. And, and you can't tell from the video, but I heard there were a hundred people sitting behind her in support, mostly teachers.
Oh, yeah, no, you could not tell that in the video. That, that is excellent.
Uh-huh.
Wow.
Because teachers realize that, you know, when will it stop? If you're saying she's insubordinate for raising issues of health and safety, I mean, everyone has their different concerns and, and how will this be applied to them? It's really scary.
Well, that school board appeared to be pretty united, uh, against Shelley. Um, it was pretty obvious by their attitudes and, and their tones. Um, and, but they did admit that she had been educating them for almost two years.
Mm-hmm.
So here's a case of, uh, school board members being informed over a period of two years. She, it came out, she was sending them emails with information, giving them printouts. Um, and yet after all that, they're still, uh, taking the easy way out, saying that, oh, well, we have to follow the government's rules and guidelines. Our, our hands are tied. So clearly, um, it's going to be a case-by-case basis with, with schools across the country on where the morals and consciences of, uh, school board members stand.
Right. And, you know, I think we have to shift the conversation from, um, you know, they say, well, there's no proof. They say it's, it's not conclusively proven and of course, they're only looking to our, our government. You know, when our government states it's conclusively proven, then they will then agree. And we need to shift it from, it doesn't matter. It no longer, we're past that. All that matters is that, you know, I as a parent or, or I as a teacher have a right to a safe environment and there's too many questions here, which is of course, an understatement. And therefore, I'm, I am, you know, not okay with, with you deciding that you can subject my child or, or myself as a worker, as a teacher, as a staff member to this risk. And in fact, this is harming my body. I mean, there's, you know, Shelley's talking about, she went in asking for accommodations so that she could be in a wifi-free classroom. And, you know, uh, Nora Lawson in, in California has been accommodated. I mean, precedents have been set and it doesn't have to be proven anymore. We just have to say that this is my human right.
And you know that, that school district in LA, I, just last week, they had an 11th grade girl just, uh, dropped dead in school. Her, her heart just stopped and, and it was a, a fully wifi-ed school with one-to-one devices.
I wonder if these teachers can't scream discrimination. You're discriminating against me, you know? I have a right.
You would think so.
I would think so.
Yeah, I mean.
Everyone else screams discrimination, you just get on that bandwagon.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we can find some other alternative methods to complain about this. I, but, but you're right. I mean, s- school board members are, are just going to have to draw the line and, and to say, this, this isn't right. You know, look at the evidence for what it is and use their brain. I mean, it's, it's obvious that the government isn't working, uh, in, in our favor anymore. They're working, uh, to protect industry. In fact, uh, Thea, when I looked at, uh, one of your YouTube videos from the February 9th, um, 2016, um, MCPS, uh, school board, um, uh, it was, it was a, a meeting where public comments could be made. Someone in the comments on YouTube, uh, put a link to a new document that is very well-written and what, and I haven't read the whole thing yet, but it shows how the FCC is, uh, manipulated and controlled by industry. Have you seen that one yet?
Well, I'm not sure which link that is. Are you talking about the, um, Harvard Press, Norm Alster?
That's the one, yes.
Yes, well, that is of course so important that everyone read. I mean, it shows that how the scientific, you know, how industry has inserted itself into the federal government at every level. And, and so we don't even have, we don't even have the, the information we need. The government doesn't have the information that they need because the discourse has been so muddled by industry. And, and it's the same, you know, I think they say, um, that it is, uh, they compare it to the hard-boiled tactics of the tobacco industry. So it's, you, you think about lead, you know, lead, the neurotoxin lead? And everyone's talking about Flint, Michigan. And in the 30s, Europe was pulling this out of lead paint. We waited until 1978 because the industry was so involved in our federal government and on these quote-unquote "scientific panels" that were put together. So I think it was in 1920-something, I forget, uh, '26, that the US Public Health Service came out saying, well, there's not really good proof that this could be unsafe. How can that, I mean, and that, if you start to look behind, who are these scientists? Where did they come from? Who funded? You start to look at funding source and you see a whole nother picture. And it is a, um, you know, unfortunately, I don't think we should be relying on the wireless industry to, to give us the science we need to understand this, this, the effects of this exposure. But the federal government is, is listening to the industry.
Absolutely.
Follow the money, right?
Yeah, and the, the other thing, uh, listeners out there need to know that which, this is so important because, um, as I've been researching this over the last few years, um, what has amazed me is how even when studies are published and presented to Congress for review, um, they will flat-out lie on the cover pages and, and the conclusions, which are put right up on top of the reports. So you can have like a 200-page study and the top page will have this paragraph that everybody reads that and it can be a flat-out lie and then they will just go by that. Um, it happened with, uh, tobacco and, and cancer studies. Um, I, specifically, there's a documentary, um, called A World Without Cancer about vitamin B17 and, and there's a famous case there where, um, two of the tobacco industry, uh, scientists were hired, the, the ones that said a pack of cigarettes a day keeps cancer away. And, uh, those two guys were hired, they wrote this big report about, uh, vitamin B17 or amygdalin and, and, and the paragraph on the front page, it said, oh, there was no proof that amygdalin, um, prevents cancer. But inside this report, if you actually took the time to look at the report, you see that there were all kinds of results showing that it prevented cancer, but, um, people just read the conclusion. And I, I've seen that with wireless, uh, studies as well, where, where, you know, they only read that front, uh, conclusion. So let's, uh, make people aware of that because you talked earlier, um, about, uh, you know, more, more studies being done, um, and, you know, people are going to have to get smart and really read.
Yeah, well, that's, the, the history is repeating itself over and over again. And like in terms of lead, they were scientific panels put together funded by industry that when you read the front conclusions is like, well, there's really not good reason, there's not enough research has been done. And if you look at what And if you look at wifi and you see, and a lot of schools and a lot of parents from schools have contacted me and this has happened to them, where they get the same two studies. It's, uh, Kenneth Foster is a researcher. And, um, you, you look at the paper, there's two reviews, I think one's 2007, the other one's, um, 2012. And then they did a review of the research on wifi. Now, it is not a systematic review, number one, but more importantly, it's funded, it says this is funded by the Wireless Alliance.
Yep.
And in the review, it's like a discussion, this long discussion, which basically says at the end, well, you know, these exposures meet FCC guidelines, which of course to a person who doesn't know the issue well, may be like, well, well, that means that it's safe, even though it never actually says that there. But then what's really interesting is that the Wireless Alliance funded these two studies and then most curiously came out with a very glossy, colorful, green and shiny brochure. And so it's, it's the manufacturing of science.
Manufacturing of science. Boy, you nailed it. I've said that in the past too. That's exactly what the, the industry is doing. They're manufacturing science, um, and, and our representatives are just, they're, they're not looking out for our best interests. It's gonna take, uh, the grassroots level to, to see that and put the pressure from the bottom up.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, what I wanna see is, is systematic reviews that need to be done. So when I read something and they say things like, which is stated in this paper, um, such as, well, we didn't really, like one only did far-field exposure, meaning they just looked at the access points mounted. They didn't look at what would it be if the computer were sitting in front of you. Of course, that's incredibly important. I mean, you don't understand a person's exposure unless you look at all the exposures in the room, including the device that you're on. And so you gotta wonder what's going on here? Why wouldn't you look at that? And if you didn't, how could this even be, how could this even speak to what's happening in a school?
Well, and not only that, um, Thea, uh, I don't even think that science has the equipment to, to detect and, and, uh, analyze combining of frequencies when you've got, uh, multiple drop points for wifi, uh, you have, uh, smart boards up front, uh, the teachers' devices and then 30 devices for the students plus 30 cell phones in, in each pocket of the student. And you combine all of those frequencies together, um, we know that they're creating new waveforms because when the waves combine, they, they make a new unknown wave. And these are waveforms never known to man.
That's right.
It's a totally new experiment. They have, I mean, we know it's bad. Uh, it's definitely harmful and carcinogenic, but we don't know what it's gonna cause. And there, there really is no science out there right now to, to, to be able to analyze that.
That's right. It is a truly unprecedented exposure. And I'll tell you, what's happening in schools is unlike anything that we can even imagine because, you know, what happened for me is when I got my radiation measurement, I got an acoustimeter, then I could sort of understand a little bit better what was going on. So I've measured many houses, I've, you know, just been everywhere with that. But when you're in a school, the situation is so different because you've got the access point. And then every child unfortunately has a cellphone.
Right.
That is not powered off, most of them. So they're always communicating with, you know, the tower or actually sometimes they're on the local wifi system. In fact, there was a school here where the wifi system crashed because of all the cell phones that were on it. So they had to make a law that the kids couldn't put, use the wifi in the school.
Oh, wow. Oh.
And, and so those exposures, you know, when the school did their testing, they didn't even, they, they didn't look at what was happening with the, with the phones. And yet they have a BYOB policy. And one thing that we've been raising with the school is, hey, if you've gotta bring your own device in, I mean, BYOD, I'm sorry.
Yeah. BYOD.
Encouraging, um, the use of this device as a classroom tool, then you have to teach the kids how to use that classroom tool. And we're raising the issue of the fine print warnings, which nobody is aware of, that you don't put it in your pocket, you don't put it in your bra. You, you know, so, and therefore, and it is the school's responsibility. And I feel that that's a legal issue too, because they are allowing, uh, a classroom tool and they're not teaching the students what it states very clearly in the manual of that device.
And in heavy, heavy-duty buildings of, of that heavy construction with the steel and the concrete, it's bouncing around in there like a microwave oven.
That's right. And you've got cell towers on the outside. So then the kids go out in the sports fields and there's a lot of cell towers mounted right there above the sports fields.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Pretty haunting situation. Well, in wrapping up, give us your website or any place that folks that are looking to band together in their own communities, where can they find information so that they can begin this kind of a process that you're in the midst of right now?
Oh, well, there's so many wonderful sites out there. I'll just give you a couple. So, um, our local blog is safetechforschoolsmaryland.blogspot.com. And I would encourage everyone to actually start their own blog to get the word out in their community that's specific to their community. But there's also, uh, Parents for Safe Technology. There's the National Association for Children and Safe Technology. And there's the Environmental Health Trust, which now has a whole section on, uh, you know, children and schools and wifi. You just start looking and, and next thing you know, you're, there's so many, there's so much information out there. I also think Microwave News is an excellent, uh, news source as well, and they have a great resource directory. But I would really encourage everyone to really get local, find parents, you know, get your email list started, start communicating regularly and writing letters and then documenting the response and having it all be public. Because as we, um, are more public and are, then, then we'll start to see, and I think the community will start to see, hey, they didn't really come back answering your question.
Right.
You know, we, we have questions, we want them answered. And the fact is, nobody can really answer them.
That is amazing, isn't it?
And we, all we want is, is a safe school and safe communities for our kids.
Exactly. It's not asking for too much and...
No.
No, it's not.
Well, we appreciate all the work that you're doing on behalf of, of everybody in this country. Um, and you're setting a fine example and I hope that people take heed and listen to this interview and, and take some action. And we appreciate your being here today.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Thea.
Oh, thank you. And please get in touch with me through, um, safetechforschoolsmaryland@gmail.com and, and, and our group, you know, if you wanna connect as well. And I also would say, please put your testimonies up when you testify because the more people that are on camera talking, then we can support everyone else in understanding this issue. So thank you so much for the work you're doing.
Well, thank you for joining us on Boil the Frog Slowly Radio. Please come back next week and for more information, go to the website, boiledthefrogradio.com. And until next week, remember to practice safe phone.